Folks here, excellent. I have the people are still waiting in the lobby or? There we go.
Oh, people are coming in.
Wonderful. Hey, good morning, everybody. We're going to give people just another minute or so to join and then we'll get started. Okay, um, I think we're good to begin. Tamara, it looks like we're on slide six. Would you be able to ever get back to number one? Excellent. Thank you very much. So, good morning, everybody. Welcome. Um, we're here today to talk a little bit about the Childcare Development Plan. This is a stand plan that we're currently drafting and is currently open for public comment as of today. This is a plan that describes how CDD is going to be administering the use of a part of federal funding associated with with the Childcare Development Fund and and some of the requirements that we had to meet as a part of that work. Today, as of today, we posted the state plans what's online currently for you to read in full. The link to that is in the chat and it's also going to be at the end of our slideshow today. We're going to be reviewing it. We're going to be, I'm sorry, revising it and submitting it to the feds on July 1st. And then this is one of our two required public hearings that we're going to be hosting as a part of getting our plan finalized. Today's presentation is just an orientation to the plan. It's not going to cover every detail of the plan. The plan is about 200 pages. It's a pretty dense document. So we're going to just highlight some critical choices that we had to make as a part of framing this year's plan. And then if you want to, we'll break that down. We'll break down the plan section by section. If you want to then go back and spend more time on the sections that you are more interested in, you can you can access the plan through the link that's in the chat. Today's format, we're going to just run through section by section, how the plan is broken down, different staff members who were in charge of drafting each section are going to be presenting a little bit about their sections. And then there's going to be some time at the end of the presentation today for Q and A. And let's see, we do have two weeks of public input that also opened up as of today. And so public input is going to close on July 11th. There is an online comment form that you can submit your comments through, which is again in that in that page that's linked in the chat. And you're also welcome certainly to ask your your questions here today, but the comments that we're formally responding to are going to be submitted through that that survey form. And the last thing I'll say is that the presentation that we're making today is going to be recorded. We're not going to record the Q and A session at the end, so you're free to ask whatever you need to ask without having to worry about being transcribed and posted online. But for anybody that isn't able to attend one of these sessions, we are going to record one and post it onto again, the same webpage that I showed earlier. So that's the the opening spiel. Tamara, can you launch it to section one? So yes, I should also introduce myself. I didn't do that earlier. My name is Chris Case. I'm CDD's Director of Policy and Planning. I do also want to just before we get into this too far, give some some credit to Tamara Pariso, who is navigating the technical side of this and the logistics of this and also did a lot of work on coordinating the the completion of this this draft state plan. So thank you, Tamara, for your work prior to this and also today facilitating logistics. Please, next slide. So the section that I'm going to be presenting on is really largely, it's I think it's the least substantive of the sections of the state plan. Some of it is just like contact information, you know, who we are as a as an institution, the Child Development Division. We're just identifying ourselves as the institution that is administering the the Childcare Development Fund program. And some of the responsibilities that come with that. So we talked about our role in making CCD a program rules that we're responsible for implementing services for the most part. That we will protect any PII publicly, or I'm sorry, personally identifiable information that's associated with this work and a host of other responsibilities around the contracting and just kind of the nuts and bolts of keeping the the program running. So assurances and and contact information. Next slide, please. And then the more substantive portion of section one is about the consultation process and the public input process. And so in that section, we talked about who we anticipate consulting with as a part of finalizing the plan. You'll notice if you read that section that a lot of those a lot of those fields are a little speculative. It's what we anticipate doing because we're in that public input process now. So we say that we have contacted for the the requirement to contact local government that we've contacted BAFTA and VLCT, the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. We talk about for the State Advisory Council requirement that we are going to be reaching out to Building Bright Futures in our early childhood interagency coordinating team, the ECICT, and also working with a few other subcommittees, the ELD and PPD. You can see it in the slide here, the Early Learning and Development and thank you, and the Professional Preparation and Development Subcommittee. But we don't really know yet what that feedback is going to look like, what we're going to get from people in the way of 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 input. And so we talked about reaching out to folks, but not necessarily what we've gotten back and what we're going to respond to. That's going to come the next month. We also talked about our public hearing requirement. You're at the first one of these. Notice was provided on the eighth for these calls. Next slide, please. And then we talk a little bit about what we're going to do with the input once we receive it. So we're going to be collecting input through that that survey tool, that online comment form that again is linked in the chat. Once we get it, I'm going to aggregate it, look for questions and and comments that need to go to our subject matter experts. Our subject matter experts are going to continue the feed, they're going to consider the feedback that we receive. And then for every point of feedback that we get, we're going to have to respond. We're going to talk about like whether we want to support a suggestion or not and why. And then we're going to put that into some kind of a public facing tools, maybe a chart or some kind of a word document, and then post that online after July 1st, after the submission date. So you will have a chance for any public input that you submit, you'll have a chance to see how we responded to it and what our rationale was. Thanks. I'm going to hand it over now to Emily Hazard.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Emily Hazard. I'm the Childcare Benefits Administrator. I'm also the coadministrator of CCDF along with Chris Case. So we are in charge of the oversight of the CCDF implementation in Vermont. So I'm going to talk about child and family eligibility enrollment and continuity of care and those requirements in the CCDF plan. In providing childcare financial assistance to families, the Office of Childcare OCC, our federal oversight, requires states to implement policies and procedures that determine and define eligibility for services. And so there are three kind of themes or main categories. Defining eligible children and families, increasing increasing access for vulnerable children and families and continuity of care that I'll go through. So for eligible for children and families. Just getting a little feedback. Eligible children and families. So we're required to have procedures for documenting and verifying that children receiving CCDF funds meet the eligibility criteria at the time of eligibility determination. So when an application is submitted and redetermination, which we do annually. Eligible children, we serve children from six weeks through 12 years of age. Childcare can be authorized up to age 19 if the child has a physical or mental special health need that would make them incapable of self-care or if they're under DCF supervision. And then our main criteria for eligible families is that the family caretakers, both primary caretakers in the household, if it's a two-parent household or a single parent household, must have a reason for childcare, also known as a service need. CCDF defines these as working, seeking employment, job training, education, and protective services. Working also includes self-employment. In addition to those required by CCDF, Vermont also accepts the service needs of reach-up, special health needs adults, special health needs child, and family support. We look at the family's income must fall within the limits specified on our sliding fee schedule. CCDF funds childcare financial assistance up to 85% of the state median income. And then Vermont's income guidelines go beyond 85% of the state median income. We currently go to 400% of the federal poverty level. And then our final requirement for families is that a family must have less than $1 million in assets. So the next section is around increasing access for vulnerable children and families. This section speaks to how we prioritize certain populations. If we were to have a waitlist, we do not have a waitlist in Vermont. Therefore, priority enrollment is not necessary. However, we still have some practices that increase access for these vulnerable populations. So we reimburse at a higher rate for providers receiving specialized training to care for children with special health needs, children in protective services, and for families with a service need of family support childcare. And if an applicant indicates they're experiencing this or the family is experiencing significant stress, they are referred to the specialized childcare coordinator to potentially be eligible under family support childcare, and that allows us to waive their income and service needs. And then the final category is around continuity of care. So we must provide, we are required to provide a minimum of 12 months between eligibility determinations. We also need to limit reporting requirements during the 12-month period and allow for job search and continued assistance due to temporary change. Any changes that affect eligibility must be reported within 10 business days of the change. We allow for up to 12 weeks, three months for a service need of seeking employment for an income-eligible parent or caretaker. And then as far as temporary changes, we define those as a change in eligible activities, including job loss, change in educational activity, a time-limited absence from work, interruption of work for seasonal workers or a student semester break or holiday break, and termination of eligibility will not occur due to a temporary change. And I'll hand it off to Carolyn Long, who's going to talk about childcare affordability.
Hi, everybody. My name is Carolyn Long, and I'm the Director of Operations for the Child Development Division. And like Emily said, I'll talk about section three, which is childcare affordability. So CCDF subsidizes childcare to make it more affordable for eligible families, providing greater access to childcare options. And this is to allow parents to work, go to school, enroll in training, and allows parents to access high-quality programs that support children's development. So one of the new rules, there was a final rule presented by OCC back in April, and actually, the these new rules went like into effect immediately, starting the end of April. They are allowing for states to apply for waivers because in some states, it's not really feasible to put these rules into place, and some states already do. So it's a, it's kind of a, it's a twofold situation. So one of those rules was that lead agencies, a lead agency is like the state of Vermont, cannot charge any family more than 7% of their family's gross income, regardless of the number of children participating in the program. So we will be requesting a waiver to implement this new requirement that has to be implemented within the next two years. And this is for CCDF funding. So the state also allows for a lot of state funding, but this really, this rule really only applies to the funds used under the Childcare Development Fund. So back to kind of currently what we do. The we waive the family share contribution for families at or below 175% of poverty level. So this includes children in protective services, reach-up referrals, and children adopted through the Family Services Division with an adoption assistance agreement. So that family actually does not have a family contribution for their childcare. And then all the other families above 175% pay between $25 and $250 per week as part of their family share. So this equates to 3.5% or 12.4% of their income. And as you can see, so with that new 7% rule, we do have a little work to do in terms of getting that percentage down. Side, please. So that was section three. I will be talking about section four, too, which is parental control, equal access, payment rates, and payment practices. So along with the state plan, states are required to do what is called a market rate survey. We actually don't do a survey per se in the true meaning of a survey because we actually have a real administrative data to complete this kind of report that we need to do. And this is based off the provider rate agreements. We call them PRAs because we love acronyms here that are collected from all providers at the time of licensing and updated every three years. This information looks at how much providers charge all parents for childcare. And then it also tells us that the state must pay at the 75th percentile to comply with the federal regulations. So we look at all the all the PRAs, kind of figure out what percentile the state is paying at or needs to pay at, and then we adjust accordingly. So currently Vermont is paying anywhere between the 88th and 95th percentile based on the current 2024 market rate survey. So, which is great. We are above that 75th percentile and showing that between 80 and 95th, and that that's for the all-age category. So preschool toddler to infant and school age at the different provider types. When we do this, when we did this market rate survey, we also have to do what's called a narrow cost analysis. And that looks at the actual cost of care for high-quality early childhood education. We were able to use the study that was called the Vermont Early Care and Education Financing Study that was presented to the legislature last year, which we included in this analysis. So when you combine the state payment rate with the family share that a family pays to the provider, the provider is currently receiving about 74% of the cost of quality care that is reflected in the narrow cost analysis. Another rule that is going into a factor has gone into effect in the end of April is that lead agencies must use payment practices for all childcare development fund childcare providers that reflect generally accepted payment practices on providers serving private pay families. So including pay, including paying providers in advance or at the beginning of delivery of childcare and not paying them prospectively like we currently do now. So we will be putting that into place, but we will be asking for that two-year waiver in order to basically figure out how to do this. So that's a big change. Providers will be paid in advance rather than after the fact for their for their their payment. Excite, please. I'm going to hand it over to Beth now.
Hi, good morning. Thank you, Carolyn. I'm Beth Maurer. I'm the Director of Childcare Licensing at the Child Development Division. And I get to sit with you today and talk with you about section five, which is the Health and Safety Standards in Childcare Settings. Next slide. Thank you. So in Vermont, there are three recognized categories of providers. We have licensed and registered family care homes. We also have center-based programs which include our public and private universal pre-K partners and our after-school programs. Notable in this section is you will see throughout not applicable because Vermont does not have licensed exempt providers as other states do and are able to have. So this slide really offers you an overview of baseline standard, which all programs who hold a valid Vermont license to operate childcare services are evaluated on annually. The CCDF final rule requires states to ensure that we regulate to these 11 health and safety standards with a with the bonus, the five additional bonuses around fire standards, pre-service orientation, ongoing training group size, and staff and child ratio. So in addition, Vermont has added three options, three more optional regulations around nutrition and age-appropriate feeding, access to physical activity, and caring for children with special needs. So this slide really is just offering you just the baseline of the categories and subcategories that you'll see. And now this slide is sort of a what what's coming. This slide offers what's going to be changing and how things are going to be changing. As Carolyn just mentioned, there are some rule changes. As you read through this section of the plan, you'll notice perhaps as a provider, what looks like discrepancies for you in terms of how we are currently regulating. So there are a number of health and safety standards that we are currently in noncompliance with the CCDF final rule, and we need to address those. And we'll do that in one of three ways, administrative memos, rule revisions, and then technical assistance. So and and we will absolutely communicate when these changes are happening and how they're going to happen. But the four in order to come into compliance, that we will be issuing administrative memo in these four categories. Currently, it is not written in our regulations that nonrecurring care programs submit the annual immunization survey, although this year all nonrecurring care programs were 100% in compliance, but we actually need that in writing. We have a waiver for children and families who are experiencing homelessness. We have a six-month waiver for those families to either be able to provide immunization documentation to their providers and/or start to get caught up. We have extended that historically to children who are in DCF custody, but because it's not officially written into our rules, that is another area of noncompliance. So we will officially be extending that six-month waiver to children in DCF custody. This one may come as a little bit of surprise to providers in our family care and our after-school regulations. We don't explicitly say that we will come out and visit you annually once every 365 days. So that is an oversight that will get added to an administrative memo. And then we for our current rules were redone in 2016, and we exempt substitutes from any ongoing PD requirements, which is actually not allowable. So this one may be sort of the oh gee, what are we going to do? And we will be working to support you to figure that out. Substitutes will not be held to the same number of annual PD hours, but there will be some expectations for substitutes. And then when we do our rule revisions, we will write in the immunization requirements for nonrecurring care and waivers. There are some pre-service orientation expectations, changes around emergency preparedness, and again, the ongoing PD for substitutes. And we will be getting Vermont is in good company with 26 other states where we are not in compliance with our federal, our fingerprint-supported background clearance. So in Vermont, we currently allow folks to start working once their record check authorization is submitted, and we check a variety of databases, but we allow people to work, but not alone with children until their fingerprint-supported background clearance is in. And that is against the final rule. So we will be getting extensive TA to try to figure out how to streamline that process and come into compliance while not having an incredible impact to the field. Turn this over to Ray.
Thank you, Beth. Good morning, all. I'm Ray Garofano. I'm the Childcare Quality Program Administrator. Our unit focuses on professional development and quality programming for the early care sector in Vermont. Section six focuses on supporting the workforce, enhancing business practices, professional development, workforce registries, and early learning standards. The passage of Vermont's Landmark Act 76 legislation enabled early care education programs across the state to increase compensation and benefits and support recruitment and retention efforts. Vermont partners with organizations across the state with expertise in childcare workforce such as Northern Lights at CCV, Vermont at EYC, First Children's Finance, and Vermont After School to implement professional development activities. Our professional development framework consists of the integrated professional development hub known as Northern Lights at CCV, Building Bright Futures Professional Development Committee, and participation in the Vermont Early Learning, excuse me, Vermont Early Childhood Higher Education Consortium. Vermont's Early Childhood Education Professional Development Framework includes professional standards and competencies, career pathways, advisory structure, financial support for the workforce, and articulation with higher education. Next slide, please. Vermont adopted to not the National Association for Education of Young Children professional standards and competencies for early childhood educators and the National After-School Association Core Knowledge and Competencies. Vermont also offers various bonuses for early educator achievements, including level level certificates, program director credentials, the after-school leadership exploration and discovery micro credentials. Vermont also utilizes a professional career ladder, which is an essential tool for planning and tracking professional growth. It organizes coursework, credentials, degrees, and licensure, which can be found on the CDD website. Next slide, please. Vermont's Professional Preparation and Development Committee advises the Child Development Division on system changes and relevant professional development topics. For example, the PPD committee reviewed and recommended the new competencies. In addition, the After-School Advisory Committee advises us on relevant after-school policies. Vermont offers several financial supports to help strengthen, maintain, and increase the workforce. These strategies include funding scholarship opportunities through the TEACH program, Early Childhood Educator Apprenticeship Program, the CDD Tuition Assistance Grants, Student Loan repayment assistance program, and funded college courses. The CDD also participates in the Vermont Early Childhood Higher Education Consortium and collaborates on issues such as articulation agreements. Next slide, please. Additional activities related to supporting the skilled, qualified, and compensated childcare workforce include the implementation of Act 76, which supports increased compensation and benefits, investment in the early childhood networks, which offers leadership opportunities and peer support, supporting the development of the early childhood education profession, continued support of the Business Technical Assistance Program, and funding the Early Educators Institute at Castleton University. Next slide, please. I'm also going to be reviewing section seven, which focuses on quality improvement activities. Next slide, please. Vermont invests 12% of CCDF funds on programs related to quality improvement activities. 9% is set aside for quality and 3% is set aside specifically for infant and toddler-related activities. Excuse me. These activities include training and development, early learning and development guidelines, quality improvement system, improving the supply and quality of childcare for infants and toddlers, evaluating and assessing the quality and effectiveness of childcare programs, and supporting accreditation. Next slide, please. Vermont's quality framework is based on the Vermont Early Childhood Action Plan, which has four goals. One, all children have a healthy start. Two, families and communities play a leading role in children's well-being. Three, all children and families have access to high-quality opportunities that meet their needs. And four, the early childhood system will be integrated, well-resourced, and data-informed. Next slide, please. Vermont's Quality Improvement System, STARS, was revised in 2023. The revised STARS focuses on three quality elements that support positive child outcomes. These elements are adult-child interactions, responsive practices, and family engagement. In addition, Vermont supports quality by offering services such as the System for Program Access to Resources for such as the System for Program Access to Resources for Quality Supports, also known as SPARKS, the Business Technical Assistance Program, and professional development opportunities related to STARS. Next slide, please. Vermont provides subgrants to programs for expanding and maintaining infant and toddler childcare slots, offers business technical assistance to regulated programs to support best business practices, and offers coaching and mentoring focused on improving quality through SPARKS. In addition, Vermont is developing an infant and toddler credential, which will provide a strong foundation for early childhood educators to work with infants and toddlers in various group settings. I will also review Section 8. Section 8 gives an overview of our coordination and partnerships to support service delivery. Vermont coordinates across federal and state agencies to support service delivery. We have many partners across the stage, across the state. And coordination partners include Office of Childcare, IDEA Part B, Department for Children and Families, which includes the lead agencies, the lead agency, which is the Child Development Division, responsible for licensing, subsidy, and CIS, the Economic Services Division, responsible for TANF, Family Services Division, responsible for child welfare, Head Start and Early Head Start, Department of Health, Department of Labor, Agency of Education, Department for Vermont Health Access, which administers our Medicaid program, Department of Mental Health, Department of Emergency and Management, and Department of Public Safety. Next slide, please. Some of our partners that help us support service delivery include Building Bright Futures, which is the state's Advisory Council, Vermont After School, Northern Lights at CCB, Community Childcare Support Agencies, Vermont Association for the Education of Young Children, Vermont Provider Association, Childcare Director Collaboratives, as well as philanthropic and advocacy partners. I will now turn it over to Beth Mauer.
Thank you, Ray. So this section, when you read the plan, focuses on family outreach and consumer education. Next slide. Lead agencies must collect and disseminate information about the full range of childcare services to promote parental choice to parents of children eligible for CCDF funding, also to the general public, and to childcare providers. There are a number of ways in which CDD reaches out to providers and community partners by posting information on our website, sending out information to the field through a variety of listservs and blogs, and by maintaining a public-facing Bright Futures website, BFIS. CDD is aware that for those families whose first or second or third language is not English, and for those whose abilities are challenged by the ways in which we currently provide information about childcare and subsidy, while we offer supports for all those to gain access to our resources, it's not currently easily accessible for parents, providers, or necessarily the general public. But with the development of the licensing module within CDDIS, which will sunset BFIS, lots of acronyms there, accessibility issues will be addressed so that our family outreach and consumer education is readily available for all. Those familiar with BFIS know that there's a considerable amount of information about each licensed provider in Vermont on the public-facing portal. And we also know that it doesn't cover everything that should be out there. One key component to a parent's ability to make an informed choice about where to send their child to care is their ability to review the regulatory history of programs they're considering. And we do that by posting annual monitoring, what we call site visit reports to BFIS. The Office of Childcare has allowed states to post blank monitoring reports on our website. And we had waivers to do this, but currently those waivers have expired. And so while you'll find our monitoring checklist, both on the provider and the parent-family tabs, we are limited to posting a complete site visit to BFIS currently. Consumers are able to see rule compliances and non-compliances. What they're not able to see is all of the other talking points that happened during an annual site visit. So for those providers who've been serving Vermonters for many years, you remember when we used to post site visit reports in their entirety. And those talking points where we're addressing rules that are not necessarily not in compliance, but that we've had conversations with providers about are no longer visible to the public. We will, we anticipate fixing this with the development of the licensing module, and we will build that into CDDIS. And we will also, states are also required to post pre-licensure site visits, and that will be a practice that is fully implemented in Vermont by July 1 of this year. And then states must also have a way for parents, providers, and the community to let CDD know when there's concerns about care for children in regulated programs. So as you read this section of the plan, I draw your attention to the ways in which complaints are filed, how they're addressed, and where the results of those investigations are captured in BFIS. I'll turn this back to Emily.
Going to talk about Section 10, the last section of the CCDF plan, and is around program integrity and accountability. So we are required to have in place effective internal controls that ensure integrity and accountability while maintaining the continuity of services. And the goal of these is to address reducing fraud, waste, and abuse, including program violations and administrative errors. And so we do this in multiple ways, but the main ways that we have program integrity and accountability is sharing and matching data from other programs, including Economic Services, Family Services, and Office of Child Support, generating regular reports related to any flags around provider billing or any totally lost my train of thought. I'm so enrollment of subsidized children at or above licensed capacity, children with multiple providers, any double payments, consistently high subsidy payments. We audit childcare provider attendance and billing records on a weekly basis. We aim to review 10 to 15% of weekly claims. We provide onsite visits to childcare providers for purposes of providing technical assistance as it relates to proper billing or other compliance-related concerns, including appropriate use of attendance codes. And then for administrative errors, we conduct regular onsite monitoring of the community childcare support agencies who determine eligibility for childcare financial assistance to ensure that they receive appropriate training to comply with policy and procedures as they relate to program integrity. And the grant monitors who provide that training and oversight review subsidy cases to ensure that we are compliant with eligibility regulations and required documentation. That is Section 10, and I'm going to hand it to Tamara Pariso, who's going to lead us into the Q and A section.